I would like to, oh, good evening, everybody, on the wet, I hope, just wet night, the rest of the night.
Yes.
Meeting, February regular board meeting. Let the record show, all's here except for Jill, she's out of town. And before, before we get to the pledge, I guess, it's been kind of a rough week across this country with what happened in Florida, among other things, and so, I guess I would really like to just, one, if you bear with me, just take a moment of silence for the victims, the families, those that are dealing with it day in and day out, it's just horrific, and just wish that on no one, ever. And don't have solutions, but I think it's our thoughts and prayers with the families and the victims, and the kids especially, to do that. So if you would, just take a moment, just... Thank you. Okay, moving on to the pledge. Steve?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and students like this student right here are the reason why we're all here tonight, I know you agree with me on that. He represents Cherokee Middle School, and he's here tonight to lead our Pledge of Allegiance. His name is Eric Osborne, and Eric was selected by his principal, Dr. Bill Powers, to represent Cherokee's 920 students. Eric is a member of the National Junior Honor Society and the Cherokee wrestling team. So as we recognize Eric, we ask that his family member and any Cherokee faculty or staff that's in the room representing the Cherokee families, please stand. We'd like to recognize you as well. Eric, if you'd like to step forward and lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
To the honor of the...
Thank you so much.
Thank you. So it is no coincidence that we are joined by a Cherokee student tonight. He is here to help us celebrate our first honoree this evening, Dr. Bill Powers, who was recently named... Recently named our 2018 Jim King Missouri Middle Level School Principal of the Year by the Missouri Association of Secondary School Principals. Dr. Powers was selected from more than 600 middle school principals from throughout Missouri. He will officially receive the award March 26th at the state conference, and will then represent Missouri in the 2018 National Association of Secondary School Principals, Principal of the Year program. For the past nine years, Dr. Powers has distinguished himself as a leader in the work that he does at Cherokee. He empowers both his students and staff, and models the importance of being a lifelong learner. He also has a passion for sharing what he's learned. He uses his social media skills to collaborate with others, and develop his own professional skills, and then he teaches others how to do the same. He currently has a very impressive following of 13,000 followers on Twitter. So most importantly, he demonstrates daily through his words and actions that he cares deeply about his students, teachers, and his staff. We have heard Dr. Powers credit many people for supporting him along his professional journey, including his wife, Dr. Dana Powers, who is the principal at Carver Middle School, and their son, Seeley. So please join us again in celebrating Dr. Bill Powers.
He's sneaking away as quickly as he can. He's trying to be as quiet as he can. You have 13,000 followers, you're not going anywhere without saying something.
Yeah, you gotta say something.
I'm wondering how many of those are actually bots. Anyway, just to reiterate what Stephen said, you know, I've said this several times when people have asked, it's been a journey. It's not about me, it's about us, and I mean that sincerely, and many of you in this room have contributed to that as well, so it is an amazing honor. I still haven't really come to grasp with that I'm the Middle School Principal of the Year, but I do know that I have a lot of people to be thankful for, all the way back to when I was hired as a teacher in Tampa, Florida. I didn't go to school to be an educator, I was a journalist, and the part I loved about that was the kids. And when I got into teaching, that was, that was why, it was for the kids. And I had a principal, Dr. Hancock, took a chance on me because I had no pedagogy training, et cetera, and I've learned everything as I've gone along the ways. And of course, Dr. Quinn hired me here in Springfield, so I owe him a great deal. Mr. Harvey, Jim Harvey, hired me as Studi, and then Dr. Riggs hired me to be principal at Cherokee 10 years ago. And so all those people kind of paved the way, showed a lot of faith in me, and I'm just trying to do that as I move along in my careers, to build capacity in the folks around me, and hopefully, one day, they'll thank me as well. That's what it's all about. As you all know, it's about our kids, it's about our adults, and making sure that we're all taken care of one another. So, and thank you all. You guys have allowed us to do a lot of cool things over the last few years, and this certainly makes our job a lot easier to help our kids when we have a supportive school board, a superintendent, that allow us that flexibility to meet our kids where they are. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now, we want to introduce you to Mr. Chris Mostyn. Mr. Mostyn, would you please come forward? For the past 12 years, he has worked as an art teacher at Hickory Hills Middle School. On March 22nd, Mr. Mostyn will receive the Art Educator Award from the United States Society for Education Through Art. The USSEA presents this award annually to an art educator who actively implements strategies that build respect for human dignity and diversity through art, and that foster teamwork, collaboration, and communication among diverse constituencies in order to achieve a greater understanding of the social and cultural aspects of art, and the visual culture in education. So Principal Sarah Odom describes Mr. Mostyn as a thinker who is willing to step outside of his comfort zone. He is constantly seeking new ways to provide a better art experience for his students. He is also described as a nurturer of future art educators, because when he supervises student teachers, he empowers them to have a passion to continually grow as an educator. He accomplishes all of this while still developing as an artist himself. Congratulations to Mr. Mostyn. So now, we'd like to pause, and we'd celebrate one of our homilies as part of our Power of One initiative. As you know, this highlights those who go above and beyond to make an impact on the lives of children. So here is our February Power of One story.
You greet them in the morning, and you say hello to them, and you say goodbye to them in the evening. You get to know who they are, when their birthdays are, I know their dog, their favorite color, their siblings. Hello, my name is Amy Wells, I'm a bus driver for Springfield Public Schools. Some of my hobbies include hiking, and camping, and fishing especially, have a garden, like to play with my horse, like to play with my kids. I'm actually from Buffalo, New York, that's where I was born and raised. I was in the Air Force for 18 years, so I did travel around a bit. I've been driving for Springfield, this is my ninth year I've been working with the school system. I feel it's important that we get to know our students. I make it a point, within the first week of school, to actually know all of my students by name, and a little bit about them. I think my favorite thing is working with the kids. I like to see the kids have new experiences, watching them grow. There are many students that I've transported over the years that I've basically carried them for several years, and watched them grow up and move on, and that's a satisfying thing, especially when I see them later on, and they, they remember me, and they say, "Oh, it's Miss Amy," and I get a big hug, and it's always rewarding to see that.
So it is my pleasure to introduce you to Miss Amy Wells, one of our SPS bus drivers. like Ms. Wells on social media. So if you have not checked our Power of One SPS hashtag on Twitter or Facebook, please do so. Those stories continue to be shared regularly. At this time, we welcome Mrs. Marty Moore to the podium to recognize two of our dedicated community partners.
Thank you, Stephen. It's always a pleasure to lift up these partners of excellence. As a coach's wife for many years, and a mother of two athletes, I've been able to see up close and personal the positive influence that sports can have on young men and women. It's no accident that you, as a board, moved to support expansion of middle school activities as a way to increase student engagement across SPS. Tonight, we're pleased to honor part board partners whose long-term work paved the way for successful student programming. Both of these programs allow students to participate in sports they might not have had the opportunity to engage in, but what makes them remarkable are the standout individuals that they encounter, who emphasize that success is defined more by passion and effort and sportsmanship than a final score. In both instances, students have fun while learning a sport that they can enjoy for a First, we'd like to recognize Susan Provance. She and Rick Grayson are both here tonight, so we can highlight their roles in two premier programs that benefits SPS students. I'd like to also welcome their fellow colleagues, Anne Mary Graff and Red Solchi, who are here from the Park Board, and thank them for being here tonight. Last board meeting, you got to hear via video, a lot of details about the impact of the archery program, but you didn't get to meet the steady force behind the scenes, Susan Provance, who in collaboration with Teresa Miller, initiated the program in 2010, when we began offering archery to our PE classes. We can't really put a price tag on her ongoing gift of time and professional expertise, but we do know that without her assistance nurturing this program over the years, it would be difficult to envision the program that we have today. Please join me in honoring Susan Provance. Joining Rick Grayson tonight is his wife, Lyndi, and we thank her for the years of support that she's provided this program as well. In the fall of 2008, SPS began another partnership with Heart of the Ozarks Junior Golf Foundation. That first year, the foundation purchased $50,000 worth of golf equipment and provided professional development for our elementary PE teachers. Beginning in 2011 and continuing today, the foundation hosts a golf tournament experience for teams from every elementary school at the Betty Allison Part III at Oscar Blue. It's a night of family fun, food, fellowship, and prizes are awarded to the winning schools. The money goes to support athletic equipment at each of those sites, and the awards range from $500 for first place to $100 for every school participating, so it's quite a gift for these schools to replenish their athletic equipment. This opportunity was expanded to middle school in 2016 using the same process, and approximately $75,000 have been given to support try golf in schools under the leadership of Rick Grayson. But again, the money's not the key thing. We thank him for his tireless advocacy in making our community aware of the need for all students to experience a quality program at an early age led by example staff and people that our students want to pattern their lifestyle. Please join me in welcoming Rick Grayson. Thank you to both of those wonderful partners who we honor for their excellence tonight.
Okay, Rick, Susan, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
We thank you for your reliable work with the kids. Count the smiles on the kids' faces.
That's the scoreboard in here. That's the scoreboard.
Anne, I know they're very busy people, so I'm gonna see if they would like to exit stage one.
If you just wanna stay and listen to the rest of the meeting, Rick.
Almost forgot about that.
You're welcome.
That's right.
It's kind of, it's almost exciting as a whole and one, but not quite. Moving on, I would entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Summit.
Motion by Lena, do I hear your second?
Second.
Second by Charles. Motion to approve the agenda passed. Now it's time for public comments on agenda items, and we do have one speaker for agenda items, and let me just remind the speakers that the board welcomes comments from the audience about the issues being discussed. It's recommended that requests be submitted prior to the meeting, which we have. Comments will be limited to five minutes for each speaker, and will be timed by the president, and you'll see with the timer up on the screen. It's inappropriate to address the board about individual students or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed to the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the schools or in the district office. The board uses its time in our meeting to listen to comments and to, or concerns about, from the public, but will not comment or engage with speakers during the meeting. So our first speaker is, or only speaker this time, is Bridget Mars.
We would all fit this opportunity to address the board of education. On behalf of the Mayor's Commission for Children, we want to offer support for the expansion of early childhood for the next three years and the repurposing of Campbell Elementary. The Mayor's Commission was formed in 2004, and one of the main proponents of that ordinance is that early childhood, zero through five, early childhood programming we address and push through the community. And, you know, I've been a part of the Mayor's Commission, I'm now the director, and I can tell you this is something that has been a top priority for us, so we are thrilled at the leadership that the Board of Education is offering, and we brought a letter of support wanting to say thank you, and we appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bridget. Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. Three items on our consent agenda, approval of minutes, approval of contract agreements, bids and change orders, and personnel elections for motion determination. So I would entertain a motion to approve our three consent agenda items. So moved? Motion by Tim, do I hear your second?
Second.
Second by Denise. Hold us in favor, indicate. Moving on to our treasures report, Carol.
Good evening. We have provided you with a budget amendment for this month, and it is limited to a revenue and expenditure increase relative to a Hartford Fire safety grant, and then additionally, we have adjustments to middle school archery program expenditures due to the large number of participants, so that's a good thing. Additionally, there is a transfer between object types relative to the Title I C migrant funding that we received. So the fund balance percentage expected for June 30, 2018 remains stable. A slight adjustment from last month's report of 17.03% down to 17.02%, so very minor change. And if you have any questions, I can be, to answer those.
Question, Carol? I would entertain a motion to approve the board's treasures report. Motion by Charles, do I hear your second?
Second.
Second by Bruce. Moving on to item seven, information reports for tonight on focus area one. Mike?
Thank you for having me.
You have to be here.
Having me, I have a chair over there after.
You have to be.
Thank you for having me. I have my right side now. And as you recall, we have been coming to you with mid-year updates around the focus areas. We brought you focus area one, last meeting we brought you focus area two, which was really a deep dive into our extracurricular expansion, which we'll just reference tonight. Tonight, we're gonna take a deep dive into the equity and access. I know that's always our piece of focus and emphasis in this district, and to do that tonight, I'm asking now Marty Moore to come forward, and she will walk you through those slides.
Thank you, and I want to underscore from the very beginning that this is truly a team approach. We work very collaboratively as a learning support partnership team, and also as a learning team. So I want to interview some of the key folks that are here with me that had a part in this, beginning with Allison Pillar, who is the Director of Learning Support, Kelsey Bravo, who is our Coordinator of Instructional Support and Intervention, Lawrence Anderson, who is the Coordinator of Equity and Access, and Lynn Marshall, who is a Specialist of Equity and Access. And I think you'll see the relevant component pieces. Also, you'll see some information shared tonight regarding Explore, and that work is done in the direction of Data Hubbard and Ben Happenworth's team. Thanks to all of them, and a big data assist from our wonderful AAA department, who's pulled the metrics together for us, and made us look a lot smarter than we are, and helped us really select the right metrics that are appropriate for the work that we're doing. So a shout out to St. John's, go in, Denise, and I'm relaxing. You will be glad. So we're going to start off by just revisiting where we were at this point in May of last year, and revisiting the progress that we've made since that report to you. And we detailed, I think, some of the strategy highlights that we are probably the proudest of, of the time that we've been working in this effort. We focused on really making sure that the programming that we've created is sustainable. And to do that, you'll see today that we've surrounded ourselves with partners, and we've pulled in other program specialists, so that instead of the way that we had largely been doing the work historically here in Springfield Public Schools, through the Office of Diversity and Inclusion or Equity and Access, one or two people kind of leading the charge, and when you think about 54 sites, and you think about the ability to spread that information deep and broad, and really build some sustainable changes in the system, that's probably not the strongest strategy approach. So we're really proud of the way we've pivoted, worked collaboratively with people inside the district and outside, so that when the people in this room are gone, we hope that this programming has taken root, and is sustainable, and is led by a host of people across this community. We have expanded student reach with very targeted, student-driven programming. One of the things that we reported on when we came here in May was that we had taken information from focus groups, and we went to church communities, we went to diverse communities, and we said, "What's not working about this? What would you like to see differently, and what changes do we need to make?" And so, when you start thinking about a K-12 reach, you can't just say to high school seniors, "Sorry, it just wasn't your time, we didn't really get there for you," and you can't put all your eggs in the elementary basket, you've gotta have sustainable programming across the spectrum. So we've worked to really target what we think are the needs at each of those age groups, and knowing that we can't do everything yet, but being very strategic, and I hope you'll see that this evening. We also, one of the things that we heard in those focus groups is that we, a strength of ours, was not providing culturally relevant strategies for dealing with families and in enhancing curriculum. And so last year, our focus was really on upgrading our curriculum offerings. What we've done now is work to build tiers of leadership training for leaders at all levels of the system, and several of you as board members went through that training last year. Our senior leadership team is embedded in that training. We now have equity champions that get regular training, and this summer, we'll be offering to teacher leaders who sign up for the summer workshops. So the same message is going out across all levels of the system, and of course, the broader, deeper that goes, again, the more sustainable that will be. The other thing that has been a wonderful benefit is that we pivoted from this "we will do it all" to pulling in those different community partners who can help us, and that's created a service delivery model that not only is better for student programming and for meeting family needs, but it's allowed us some cost savings that have allowed us to expand some programming in ways that really matter the most, and so we hope to be able to share that with you as well. Recall, too, in May, that we talked about the guiding principles that came from our own district data, as well as those focus groups, and we identified really three priority areas. So this is a repackaging, so to speak, of what those priority areas that we reported on last night. We knew that we needed to close the achievement gap, specifically making sure that all students were literate prior to going into third grade. We knew that we needed to strengthen the literacy foundations and really help people understand about the STEAM, the science, technology, engineering, and math opportunities that are available for people. We also knew that as students went from middle school to high school, that there was a gap in equity with students that were taking the advanced courses, and so we're beginning to create systems that will help us address that more effectively. We also heard that there are really great things that you have in Springfield Public Schools, but if our underrepresented and under-resourced families don't know about them, because our traditional communication systems and models don't work, then it's like the tree that falls in the woods and nobody hears it, you know, it didn't really happen. So we worked at detailing what kinds of communication would work best, and making sure that we ramped those things up. And then finally, we knew that we needed to enhance the professional learning options, and we spent some time figuring out what do we do for the whole system, how do we build a cadre through those equity champions that gets every site somebody onsite who has that expertise to support a leadership team? And then, what are the different needs at different sites? What are the menu of options that we can manage? And then, how do we customize training? So if a kid who's high school calls us and says, "We've got an issue, what would it look like here?" We will customize training for them. The other thing that we knew was really important is that we had to make sure that the way that we provide and services spoke to the things we heard in those listening reports, and this is the same diagram again that you saw in May. First of all, everything had to be grounded on building strong relationships with families, with students, with staff members. And one of the things that we noticed is that so often, when you're trying to move the needle on equity and access issues, a lot of shaming of people, and beating them up, and here's all the things you're doing wrong, is kind of the first piece, and then people shut down. So you've gotta begin to help people understand where they are, what's their story, how does their story fit in the symphony of stories that is the district, and build those... their story fit in the symphony of stories that is the district and build those strong relationships. We also wanted to make sure that all of the learning opportunities that we provided, whether it was for students, staff, or families, were grounded in authentic learning opportunities. Things that were not happening, a lot of the scenarios that we pulled from our training are kind of ripped from the headlines. And then, what we hoped would kind of mix that pot even further is that connection to our humanness. What we believe in our core is that we are more alike than we are different. And we hear that from all of the different voices that are helping us craft this program. So, the more we can leverage that, the richer that program becomes. And so, what did that look like? What you'll hear over and over are how those three things helped pull partners to the work in different scenarios and again, thinking about that graded core. That if just Marty and her Equity and Access team are working on things, if Marty goes, gets hit by a bus, you know, people take a different job, does that whole initiative go? But when we've got our various community entities surrounding all of our work and the thought is if one or two of us go, we've still got three or four that have the core piece and heart of that program and a much better sustainability process. So, let's look at what we've been able to do this year. The programming that we are going to highlight in this report that we found to be most effective in closing the achievement gap and in starting on this kind of journey are detailed there. So, you'll be hearing tonight about, and you've heard about several of these things repeatedly, our Yujima Family Literacy Night and Yujima Explore. That's that early childhood piece to figure out a way to get students engaged and involved and their families in knowing the importance of literacy and good, solid core strategies for literacy, so that they can seamlessly engage in wonderful programming that already exists, parent's teacher, early childhood. But what we found was, sometimes they weren't engaging in those programs because their comfort level wasn't there yet. So, we kind of immersed them in this Yujima experience, we immersed them in that Yujima Explore experience, build that trust with the district, build those trust with the providers, and then hand them off seamlessly to existing programs. Last year, we began, or LA began, the build of the middle school Latino student groups based on the STEP Conference that MSU hosts, What's in Your Backpack. This year, we expanded that to middle school African-American student groups at Jarrett, Pipkin, Hickory Hills, and Westport. And then, at the very second semester, we added Westport Young Ladies Group called Young Ladies of Purpose. So, we've got very specific program that is supposed to kind of be culturally relevant to introduce them to key figures in the community, help them understand the value and the unique pieces of their culture, how they fit into the school, and lead from their strengths so that they can be successful. Middle school engagement clubs, we went into a pretty deep dive with that at the last meeting, but figuring that if students have a place where they're engaged at school, they're much more likely to achieve, they have those friends and they attend and they achieve. And then finally, for college students, until we can build that better road that provides them access to higher level courses, what can we do by way of scholarships and ACT prep that help them understand the opportunities? And so, we've hosted a variety of ACT prep classes, we do individual tutoring at sites, we do work with individual targeted students generally as a part of each of the high schools' top 25 students, where that intersects with Equity and Access, helping them know the opportunities that are available and providing a little bit of one-on-one time. And then, full-scale district programs such as Explore and Club Encore. So, we're going to look at some of those metrics one by one. So, when we looked at Yujima, we probably struggled with this the most. It's a, it's a small program, it's in the midtown neighborhood, and quite frankly, it took a good deal of time to get the program up and running and build a core group of students and families that would attend. And one of the things that the families, who are now part of that family advisory, told us is, we hope it never gets too big, because if it gets too big, then we're lost in the shuffle. And so, what we ultimately decided is, the key thing is to have a high retention rate. In other words, once students and families come, we want to maintain them for the scope of that program. Now, what we know is, we don't, you know, we have 25 coming and then five move out of that grade span. What's our plan then to onward that next group? And we, and so, that's the piece that will be that next focus. We also have a parent advisory board now that is going to take over the programming, and that's a community-based piece that's led by Lila Butcher. She shepherds those parents and helps provide the training for them through Bart Medica and Neighborhood Association and, or Neighborhood Center. And there are nine members on that advisory, and so, our key thing will be, will we retain those advisory members for the term of their membership? We're averaging 14 students plus a parent and or guardian every time. So, the room is usually fairly full, about 25 to 30 people. We have a business partner that comes alongside. It has been at times a church and sometimes it's a bank, which is Chase, which is providing those meals now. But again, what we want you to see is all of those different entities wrap around and provide those services. It's very robust with lots of different experts in the room. So, library does the literacy program. NAACP brings that, that group in that kind of infuses it with that cultural relevancy and sensitivity piece. MSU, we have students from speech and language that are working individually with families, providing additional expertise for special ed. We have an autistic student with autism that is there, and some of those special needs are met. So, it's kind of a double dip with that. Yes?
How, how are you defining the achievement gap here? I mean, this is a metric for Yujima, but if you take all of these together, how will we know when that gap has been?
Well, what, what, what I, what I think is it will take some time, because what we can do is we can pull all of those students by what of those services they're getting. It's just frankly, too early to tell if they go to Yujima and if they have Explore and if they have, at some point, we'll be able to tell impact-wise, what's the dose or what are the levels of support beyond regular classroom day that, that appears to be the tipping point?
So, what, what is the achievement gap? Is it standardized test scores?
We're using standardized test scores and attendance, because we feel like those two measures, right? One, one of the things that happens with underrepresented students is, it's easier to be, to not care than to be stupid. And so, when, when school isn't a safe and engaging place, attendance is a problem and then that achievement gap piece. So, these are precursor metrics, I would say, to some of those impact measures that I think you're wanting to see.
Thank you.
Good question. And again, I think the other piece that we're beginning to see are the anecdotal stories. So, this is a screenshot of Ariel, who is one of our students who has been coming since the very beginning. She has now posted two book reviews on her Facebook page that she has selected the book and done a book talk and posted it on Facebook. She refers to Yujima as her book club and actively recruits other members to come. She wears her Yujima shirt to school. We also have some younger, one of the ones that, that comes to my mind is an 18-month-old who the mother brought them to attend for their older sister, and she apologized all the time. He's running around, he's crazy, and everybody kept saying, no, no, stay. What's happened over time is he's learned that you sit with the book and he's learned to engage. And so, I think of, again, some of those impact measures of students heading school that have had those additional layers of support above and beyond what had been provided is going, is going to have a huge payoff. When you look at the things that we have done for middle school and high school students, the metric that we have used is their satisfaction with the program. And this is a similar metric that we use with our curriculum professional learning and other professional learning across the district. And typically, we ask a couple of questions. How relevant is the content to you? Is it something that you're going to be, you know, that is meaningful to you? Are you able to apply some of the concepts from the work to what you're doing? What's the overall quality of the session? And then, we routinely ask, what's your level of engagement? And so, what you'll be able to see is, the first bar is the African-American empowerment group, the last bar is ACT, the middle one is the What's in Your Backpack, which is the Hispanic group, and the third bar is the Young Ladies of Purpose, which is the newer group. So, we have the African-American empowerment group, we have 61 participants across four sites. With the What's in Your Backpack, 90 participants across four sites. The women, the Young Ladies of Purpose, we have 13, that's our fledgling one at Westport. And then, ACT prep pulls in underrepresented students, 73 of them from five high school sites. So, again, we're pulling kind of that, that one metric. Again, some of those anecdotal comments, the young men say they liked hearing from speakers and knowing more about their culture and history. They like meeting people that look like them. I had the opportunity today to be at Westport where Coach Brandon Kimbrew presented to young men. And at the very end, they had a little bit of time for questions, and one of the other boys raised his hand and said, why do you, why does this matter? Why do you care about this? You know, your heart stops in the back because you're there just for the photo op and to thank him for his gift of time. And he, he pauses a minute and he says, you know, I've got a job and I've got a house and I've got a car, and I think you want those things too. And he said, I've got what I need and I can provide for my family. And he said, you, every single one of you in this room are important to our future and I want you to have those things and I want you to be in order to take care of it. Could have heard a pin drop. There's not a metric for that, but that steady influence of these community assets, who each have a different story, who each have a different part of that puzzle, and then the time that they're investing in those young people, I think, is substantial. This is the new group at Westport, the Young Ladies of Purpose, and their last meeting had a tea. And you can see a couple of them with their little pinky in the air. So, there, there's a snack provided at each of these, decorum, a mindset piece, and so, their focus this time was on the power yet. What can't you do yet? And then, they filled out the handout, which I think we can pass out one for you to look at, that, that helped them kind of frame the things that they couldn't do yet but would eventually be able to do. I'm also very proud because Ms. Gwen Marshall managed to get them tickets to One E K Hammonds on Saturday in a bus of those young ladies. And three teacher chaperones from Westport took them to see the performance there. And one of the things that we're noticing again is these exposure to events are changing the way that they physically present themselves and raising that level of expectation and raising that idea of what is possible for them. I know Dr. Juggman had the opportunity to have one of the young ladies from Hillcrest sit at a table at the Freedom Fund banquet. It was a transformative experience for the young lady, I think, as, as well as the people that were at the table that knew her prior to some of these engagement pieces.
Very diplomatic.
Very hard for a woman.
And half of what I would tell you is, she is registered now at OTC, has got a new group of people there that are watching out for her. So, that initial caring and concern here has now been passed. And again, it's that relationship building, those people that are surrounding her that are making her successful. Now, some of the more easy to maybe showcase metrics detailed from Explore. So, you can see the total number of students that were served, you can see that percentage of underrepresented students, the meals served, and the field experiences. And again, we feel like for this particular population, those meals and those field experiences above and beyond what they would be able to have on any given summer day contribute to their success in the district. Similarly, we looked at Club Encore by the numbers in grades 2, 3, 5. We looked at the number of students eligible to once and attend, what is the percent of those underrepresented students, and again, the super snack that's served after school. Some serious conversations going on about Club Encore, again, in same venue of how, what size is too big, right? Is, do we need to focus on our most needy students first before opening those floodgates? And so, that's a conversation that we're having as a team. So, sometimes it's, it's good to grow and then sometimes it's good to stay. How do we allocate those resources to meet the needs of the most struggling students? Middle school engagement piece, this is a familiar slide. You saw the detail at the last board meeting about the co-curricular, extracurricular, and athletic categories that we were now putting students into buckets for. You saw the closer look of the numbers and the percentage at each site, specifically with the extracurricular. What we promised you at that time and what we have for you now is a little bit of a close look of when we look at those underrepresented students, how good a job are we doing at capturing them for the middle school engagement clubs? And I have to say, I was very pleased with the correlation early on where we are in this journey. So, it's a, it's a really nice matchup. Remember, it's still a dipstick check-in time, so those numbers could have changed and expanded, wobbled a little bit today, but as of, I think, the 15th of February, this is the report and I think we can only enhance that. I think the hard work's been done, is that mind shift for teachers, not just the kids that we're always going after, but the kids who don't have something. And it looks like we're beginning to, to see that corner turn. Yes?
Do you, do you have a sense of, I mean, I'm, I'm actually impressed that the line, the difference is not?
I am, I am greatly relieved. It's, it's very exciting to see it that, that close.
I mean, do you have a sort of once-over-lightly account for where there are differences? Is it a transportation issue? Is it?
We, we hate to jump to that judgment, but we do know that we had to flex some things at different schools. And the schools actually thought very creatively about what times of day they could engage students. So, some of the clubs are in the morning, a couple of the, the clubs are at lunch, a couple of the clubs after school have, have done some creative ways to get people home or to piggyback them on days when there might be an event where people might return and they would have a better, you know, they, they'd be there a little bit longer. So, what I think is interesting is that the middle schools really took the challenge seriously about going after those kids that, that weren't necessarily already engaged in activities. And I, and I think, once you've seen that you can have success and you, and you see what that data looks like, it makes you even more excited to go after some of the additional ones. And I think we'll only get better at figuring out what our students need. That's a celebration. Improved communication is the second programming area, and so, a couple of the things that we were advised to do, first of all, is to use a social media outreach. And so, each of us have Twitter accounts where we have a requirement of a number of tweets and number of Facebook posts based on best practice in terms of engaging your group. What I will take responsibility for here is that we didn't open a dedicated different stream, so this is commingled with my Facebook page and with our individual Twitter accounts. And to really get the metrics that we need, we need a dedicated one that's fresh and new. I'm a little back and I'm trying to learn some new tricks. So, what we know for next year is that we'll need to switch that out. But, but we're very pleased with the engagement, the reposts, and the shares that we get that go out to networks beyond that of SPS. LA Anderson has created targeted Canvas groups that provide direct communication to students and their families, advising them of scholarship opportunities, links, training events, all kinds of different things, and we're getting good response with that as well. Gwen in LA published a monthly elementary and secondary newsletter that goes out that has timely articles that speak to questions that teachers have and provide resource support for those curriculum pieces. And then, finally, Gwen writes a monthly column for Unite, and that gets pushed out. And she is largely the voice of SPS in terms of, here are things that you can do to help your, your, your child be successful. So, I've captured a couple of screenshots to let you see what these things look like. I'm very pleased with the feedback that we're getting from teachers on the Equity and Access newsletter. It's clear from the analytics there that they are reading it, that they're, they're incorporating those strategies. And part of that comes from our thought that if teachers knew what resources they needed to use, they would use them. So, if they knew better, they, they would do better. We're, we're starting to see that. Our Equity and Access Champions will now take over writing some of those, those articles, and we've seen some really impressive work. One that comes to mind is Brian Vega at Hickory Hills, who had a post today with, why do we celebrate Black History Month? And he opened up the thing and it was just pictures of all the students in his school that were faces of color, and then the last two were his own children. He said, no, they're, they're not black, but I want them to grow up in a world that sees the value of all people and highly appreciated by his staff and a soft touch, a light touch. And then, one of the teacher feedbacks was, a picture of those really saved a thousand lives. So, the reach that we're able to have from the Equity and Access Champions and the partners and how all those networks come together are exp- and how all those networks come together are expanding the word and helping people really know the opportunities that are available in Springfield, Maryland. And finally, our enhanced professional learning. We have a senior leadership training series that is ongoing. We add to that and take people a little further each year. Champion Equity for SPS students is our, kind of our call this time. We have our Equity and Access Champion training. We have community-based professional learning opportunities, a menu of offerings, and then those customized trainings that I spoke of. And so again, we use those same metrics for our professional learning with leadership and with our champions. The relevancy of the content, the ability to apply the content, the overall quality, and the overall level of engagement. Now, what you will notice, the first bar is our Senior Leadership Team training. The second bar is our Equity and Access Champion training. Remember our Equity and Access champions? Want to be there. None of them were voluntold. We really got the right people in the room. The menu of offerings are usually when a school decides we've got a problem or we have an issue that we want to kind of get in front of. And so we're going to pull people together, maybe for a staff development. So some of those may not be as engaged, but we're still pleased to see what that looks like. And then finally, the community-based component pieces that we do out in the community. So to wrap up what we see as our major accomplishments, we think we've improved our process, product, and presence. We've continued to do the historical work, the things that we've always done. The Martin Luther King Junior March, multicultural fair, the conferences for students, Park Day, Juneteenth. But we've added what we think are some very targeted programs that are making a difference in our school community and increasing trust across the broader Springfield community. That program is sustainable because we're working with our community partners. One of the things I think we're proudest about in terms of creating a sense of awareness is we collaborated with our Equity and Access champions and they conducted with their site leader an Equity and Access audit. So they looked at key metrics with the achievement gap, with attendance, with discipline referrals broken down to every different level of conference, ISS, OSS, and then created a goal and an action plan for their focus of the work this year that they do at that site above and beyond the engagement that they have with us. That awareness and the aha that they've had by looking at what that data says and what it means for their school is going to take us to that next level next year. First of all, you have to have that awareness. You have to see where you are and know that you can do better. Again, with the middle school engagement, we have those stipends that have been implemented. And then we've updated site-based training offerings based on feedback. We've really tried to be sensitive to what are those hot buttons that they have at sites? And what is a tool that they could use the next day to mitigate that and make that better? So our next steps are to leverage the success of existing programs to expand what we've done in literacy to numeracy. And then to move the needle on diverse and underrepresented students in our advanced classes. And I think our Equity champions are going to be a key piece of that in working in concert with our CSIs and our building leadership teams. We want to expand the middle school empowerment programs beyond those original four sites so that they're available at all middle schools. We want to fine-tune the middle school engagement offerings, even though those are doing really well based on the data that we have. And we want to continue to gather satisfaction data from surveys and focus groups to make sure that the programming is meeting the needs of these underrepresented students and their families. What questions can I answer?
Questions for Marty.
Comprehensive presentation. Covered a lot of ground.
Is, I'll ask a question. Because I think all the stuff you're doing is really good and vital and critical to the success of these kids. As you made a comment, will contribute to the, see what you say, will contribute to the success in the classroom. At what point, I know this is a snapshot time, at what point do we start seeing that trend? And Amy did the presentation where it was several meetings ago with our APR scores. And one of the things that we saw improving in was suburbs. Is that kind of reflective of some of these activities that you're doing with respect to some of those? Or do you think that's too early to tell?
I think it's too early to tell whether it's good or bad. I think these are the right programs at the right time for where we are. And what I'd really like is next year to say, "Yeah, we're seeing it's making a difference." They're attending, they're not in as much trouble, and they're learning at higher levels. Anecdotally, we hear some positives, but we don't have that impact data that I want, that our team wants, yet.
Well, I mean, I think they're...
Right, right.
I think they're on the right track. I agree, I'm just looking for...
Right. And I think the other power of it is, is that we're not standing alone. You know, I noticed that today with Coach Kimbrough, right? Is that he can do some stuff as a way cool coach that old lady Moore can't do, right? And so, you know, he goes, you know, "What do you want to be?" And talking, but I don't want, if you couldn't do sports. Sports is off the table because they're all going to be NBA stars, right? Or football players, right? Sports is off the table, what are you going to be? And so they all stood up and said something. He goes, "Now, what are you going to have to do when I come back next time? I want you to tell me what you're going to have to do to get there." So it's the village, so to speak, right? Surrounding the kids and providing lots of support, which ties into the other piece of the community work that I do with partnerships, is that we know, the Blue Ribbon Report said, "Mentors that next to us." So we've got to have lots of people providing role model leadership in lots of these places. And I think our programming sets us up to be able to do that. Long answer to a short question, sorry.
I have a comment, a comment, a question. I'm proud of our district for being adaptive, the team. And we're looking for adaptive methods to individualize support for our students. And I'm also very proud of our community where we continue to see, we've always had partnerships, but we continue to see, I would, I mean, I don't have a metric for it, but, you know, deeper engagement, deeper commitment, I think, from certain new partners and existing partners. And so there's really been a focus on that. And we see them on the front row for ten minutes and then they're dismissed and we honor them and we hear about them. But I know from my previous experience with programming, and this is a question. You know, when do you know to say no to a program? Like, when do you know that, "Hey, I don't know that this is working"?
We did. So one, we, and a college should have shared that. So last year, we thought that this collective impact series that we were doing once a month in the community was going to change the trajectory. Now, what I'll tell you is, I still am glad we did it because it got us into the community. They saw our faces, they saw our sweat on Saturday morning, right? We brought SPS staff, the food services folks, community assets on meditation, healthcare. We brought everything to this community site and it was not well attended. And we listened and they said, "Man, we just kind of want to sleep in on Saturdays." So what's interesting is, now you go full circle, we built up Ujima. You know what the parent advisory is saying? We'd really like to have some programming come in and talk to us about healthy eating. Well, everything that we largely had done in Community Impact Series, but it's on their time, on a night of their choosing, in that neighborhood association that they trust. And so it was hard to let it go, but we did. Drop, left it like a, on the side of the road, you know? And said, "What can we learn from that that we can pull in?" So we've got to connect them with assets and supports, but it's got to be their question and it's got to be in their place when it feels right for them. And so I'm proud that we did it, I'm proud that we learned from it, and I'm proud that we pivoted because what we're going to have as a result of that is going to be much more robust and it's going to include a larger group of service providers, which is the only way we can do it without killing ourselves. So it's a win-win-win.
So let us be brave to continue to, you know, fall forward. And you've used the word numerous times tonight, which I'm going to jot down and remember, pivot. But let us be brave enough to fall forward and pivot when we need to. And that, I do not see that as failure at all, but that we're brave enough to try and see if it works and brave enough to pivot when we need to because we don't want to exhaust ourselves and not meet the mark. So I appreciate that. The other thing, I'm just thinking in terms of my research mind is while we're looking at outcomes for our students, but I'm, you know, curious as to measuring parent engagement or measuring guardian engagement or measuring parent trust? Because I know all those outcomes are associated to ultimately impacting the student. And so I guess I would just encourage you to think about some of those variables.
We think some of those will be accessible through the Panorama Survey.
Okay.
That I trust my school. There are some line items that we think we can pull in.
The parents or guardians could...
For parents as well. The other metric that I would like to include, because again, anecdotally, we've seen some real leadership changes. There are people that have been through the leadership training that have taken it very serious. And we're seeing a different response to a similar event because their perspective has changed. And it's kind of that, once the mind has been opened and sees that different possibility, you can't go back. And so I'm looking, we're looking for a metric to be able to show that change in leadership response. Now, I'm not going to say it's all because of the training, but I do think it's opened some new roads for...
When you say leadership, you mean like teachers and...
Leader at any level. I think we're seeing, we're seeing changes with our Equity and Access champions. We're seeing the senior leadership that's been through the training. So leadership at any level, and I would say our student leaders as well. So just that exposure to different perspectives and some of the things that we're learning about are changing the trajectory.
Okay. So and so there's the audience of parent, guardian, but then there's also the audience of internal leaders.
And I think both of those metrics have a place. One, I think I can get with a pen around, the other one we're noodling on.
We've sat through, I don't know if it was MSBA or NSBA, I can't remember which one, but talking about parent engagement and really targeting the disengaged parent to get them to be engaged. But, so we know that there are measures out there, but I think the parent and the guardian is quite influential in what we see success with our students. And I know you know that, but I just was thinking, there could be some other things to look at to...
Absolutely. More open, you know, torn in as we go.
Marty, I think this work is some of the most important work that can happen in our community. Any community worth its salt, and Springfield is worth its salt, has to be committed to equity and access. So I'm going to ask you a hard question, all right? And that is, and I will take two things off the table.
Okay.
If you could identify one thing that would help you do your work more effectively? And the two things that you cannot mention are, we cannot clone Brandon Kimbrough and we cannot magically change the demographics of Springfield, okay? Other than those two things, what would help you do your work even more effectively?
Wow. That's a loaded question.
That's, well, and I feel like I'm a very reflective learner. And so I'm in the same space that I'm trying to think about it. I'm thinking how I would have answered that question five years ago. Or the first year I got here and kind of saw how Springfield is a different community. And so some of the things I checked at six years ago, I have grown to love about Springfield. And I think probably the greatest challenge we have is what I'm going to call narrowing the era. Narrowing our focus. Is that I think sometimes we, and that's a lesson I think we had to learn, is that we thought we could do it all because historically, we had tried through this office to do it all. And all you do is burn good people out, or bad, good, bad, burn anybody out, right? I mean, because the work is too daunting and it's too big. And so what we've learned is, that I think Springfield as a community can learn, is instead of starting new areas to try to handle things, everybody's staying their lane, right? So we work with the schools. We let the library, who are, and I'm not saying we don't have great people in literacy, but that's all they do, right? And they know books and they know appropriate. We don't try to replicate what a parent or teacher does, right? What we try to do is pull all of those really good people together and say, "Let's all join hands. Let's all surround these kids and let's provide the service." And I think the more we can do that and the better we can do that, the better results we're going to have for kids. It's when sometimes we try to think, da-da-da-da, and I like to put my Wonder Woman puffs on as much as the next scout, you know, and ride in and save the day. But I think it's learning how we can deeply collaborate on those things that are most important to all of us. Would be my, my, another short question, so. I'm a little passionate, our team's a little passionate about this work, so.
Yeah. Bless you for being passionate.
Any other questions?
Any questions for Marty? Okay. Mike, you going to wrap it up?
I was going to say, thanks for Marty and his team. They've done amazing work. Stephen and I had the privilege of going to Ujima a few months ago. And I think that was there, it was a story, really a story.
Yes.
December. And so it is really just a powerful wraparound services. And I just want to thank Marty for her passion and the team for doing so much for work in this area. So thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to next item, Robertson Community School update.
Yeah, I think this is kind of a continuation of the story around Equity and Access. A number of years ago, Springfield Public Schools elected to kind of go down the community school model and was kind of brought to our attention that perhaps we needed to bring you an update and see where we're at with this. And so to help do that update, I'm going to introduce Dr. Jane Anderson. We'll kind of introduce the team and walk you through the slides.
Thanks for having us tonight with this update. So we're going to have three of us talk to you, even though there's certainly more that were part of this. And including Dr. Kevin Huffman, who is the principal at Roundtree, and we have...
Roundtree, Robertson. It's okay.
Start over. Start over.
Hey, we're paying attention. We're paying attention. That's one way of looking at it.
Dr. Huffman from Robertson Elementary. And with him is Laura Schultes, who is, she's their librarian, but she also serves another role. She's their community engagement coordinator. So that's an important team. And then we have team from way back when this whole concept started. Ben Hackenworth, who served in my role, the role that I currently serve in back then, is part of this team as well as Christine Jones. And Christine Jones was a vital part of this. Christine, did you...
Oh, she is here.
She is back there. So she was tremendously important with this one. Her current role is now the coordinator for summer learning and student experiences, if that's the right role. We get fun with titles here. But we want to give you a picture and an update of what's happening at Robertson and the amazing things that are happening there. There's community school at a glance. And it's enrollment at 221 students with a free and reduced rate of nearly ninety percent. Advanced efficient on their ELA fifty percent and thirty-seven percent advanced efficient on their math scores. When you look at some comparable scores, and these might be along the Carney Corridor or along the Grant Corridor, you might see more or less. But these are schools that we would say are similar to Robertson and the communities that they serve. And you can see the enrollment varies between 200 and 350 students roughly. The free and reduced lunches comparable, and then their ELA and math percentage scores. So those are the types of schools that we were talking about when we talked about Robertson and where they're at. The purpose of this is to share a little bit about where we are with Robertson Community School because it actually has two different impacts, two different, we're going to tell the story about two different variables that really impacted Robertson. And so we're going to give you that historical perspective. We're going to ask Laura to come forth and share a little bit about current programming, what's a day look like for a student at Robertson, and then have Dr. Huffman talk about the impact there. So the historical perspective that you...
Jane, I want to have a question real quick.
Slide three, with the very technical Carney or Grant Corridor. Is that, is this a year at a glance? Is this a point in time comparing these schools and scores?
This is pretty much the current.
Just like this year?
Are you talking this slide right here?
Yes.
Yes, this is the most current.
Okay. So this is not a cumulative or average or...
Not a cumulative.
Okay.
Thank you for asking. So let me give a historical perspective. I'll be as brief as possible. In 2005, there was the Community Focus Report that came out. And we have blue ribbons and the red flags. And the red flags came out, number of poverty students that were in Springfield. And it was considered an alarming number, especially those that were living here in Springfield. And with that came a $1 million grant called... And with that came a $1 million grant called the Echo Grant. It was enhancing choices, let me get the dialogue right, enhancing children, children's healthy opportunities choices. Okay, enhancing children's healthy opportunities grant. It was a $1 million grant under over a five-year period, and it included partnerships from Community Foundation of the Ozarks, Community Partnership of the Ozarks, MSU, World Health Services, and of course Springfield Schools. And the idea, the main goal, was to eradicate poverty, a pretty lofty goal. Obviously, didn't happen, or wouldn't succeed. However, it did do a number of things in promoting childhood resiliency. And we learned a number of things from this program. And it's, what it set up is a full-time counselor at each site. And at this time, we did not have full-time counselors at all of our sites, especially our elementary, for example. Previous to the Echo Grant, Campbell had a counselor two days a week. And Robertson had a counselor three days a week. Well, that was not enough to meet the social, emotional, physical health needs of the students. So, we were able to provide that with this grant, mental and health counselor, full-time health coordinator. And all staff were trained on social skills, and we use the Boys and Girls Town model for that. And then we partnered with MSU for their teaching preparation and research. Part of, as we went through that five years, especially with Dr. Huffman and his staff, what they learned, and Dr. Huffman has always had an interest in the community school concept, the community school model, building those programming around that. So, there in front of you are the elements of a community school. And you can see that there are 11 characteristics or elements of a school, and what that means to be a community school. All the things, type of things that we want to drive in all of our schools, but these ones, some of them, carry a heavier weight, a heavier focus. And we're going to delve into some of those.
Don't we do that non-averaging?
But in order to move that direction, we needed to say, what is, what, what would it take to be able to do that? And so, a huge ability study was done, and we turned Robertson into that community school, and have all of those aspects. We were interested in not having it be standalone, but we needed to start it somewhere. And so, we started with these four sites. And this is where Christine Jones and her expertise really played a magical part in this, is gauging the community and staff interest. And it had to be based upon these four things, school leadership, staff and school readiness, family and community readiness, and the facility. And what we found was that what, as, as example, Robertson met all of those needs. Some of those schools that were up there, they had a leader that was interested, but the parents weren't buying into it yet. They had a community that was buying into it, but the teachers weren't on board with it yet. And so, we took all of those factors and finding out where they were to make this go forward. So, Robertson, there's some data for you about the selection process. 223 Robertson families were surveyed with a 70 percent response rate. That's unheard of. At this time, Robertson was a little bit larger than it is now, because we, because we didn't shift the boundaries yet for the current free month. And so, that helps put that in step. At that time, 83 percent of the Robertson families were very interested, or somewhat interested, in this community concept school. And they were in, 74 percent were interested in the idea of a balanced calendar, different than our, than our regular standard calendar. So, as that support was there, the implementation became the next step. 2011, 2012 is when those community partners were identified. And the next year, talked about the wraparound services and what those were included. Phase three was then putting in the calendar, so the programming came in before the calendar. And these were the goals of that, holistic approach to education, enrichment and learning opportunities, and those partnerships. And using the community as, using the school as that community hub. So, we want to tell you a little bit, we want you to hear some, those closest to the source. What is the community school current programming and its impact? So, first, I'm going to have Laura Schultes come forward and share with that. And standing next to her during that time will be Dr. Huffman, who's going to talk about its impact. So, I'm going to ask both of them to come to the scene, and Laura, you can be at first.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us here this evening, we really appreciate it. And I'm very excited to talk about what's going on at Robertson. And in fact, I can get quite lengthy, so I've asked Dr. Huffman, should I need a, a pen there to wrap things up? So, during the school day, we have several partners that you may or may or may not see at times, that are helping our students with different things. From pull-out needs with tutoring, to special science programs, to Lego programs, that sort of thing during the day. Where we really shine with the number of opportunities happens after the school day. And here's a sample of some of the things we're offering our students right now. I'd like to tell you a little bit about a, some of the revelations we've had with this, with offering these opportunities. And one of them would be a swim program that we put together last year. It was water safety at Snorkel, and it was in partnership with Community Partnership of the Ozarks and Di Ventures. And initially, we put it out to just fifth grade. And the students needed to be able to swim across the pool, one leg, keep their head above water. And we had 12 spots available for our fifth graders. We could not fill those 12 spots, because we didn't have enough kids that knew how to swim that way, that they didn't have that swimming competency. And so, then we offered it to fourth grade as well. And when we did that, we were able to fill eight spots. We had eight very eager, very happy kids who were in the water at Di Ventures. But, that left a big gap with these kids who can't swim. And so, we went to the park ward, and we said, is there an opportunity for us to introduce some of our kids to, we're speaking swimming lessons, we're seeing this gap here? And they, it's taken a little bit over a year, because you know, those things take time. And I, one of those things I've had to learn with this job is patience, because I always want to see things happen right away. And the beauty of that partnership opening up is that we are going to have, our second graders are going to be taking swimming lessons at Doleing after spring break. They're going to have one full session, so we're meeting that gap, so it's very, very exciting. Another thing we offer is running club. And our running club meets both in the fall and spring, it culminates with the 5K. And in this club, we are trying to do some of our clubs where we're also have our parents involved. And we have our, some of our parents running some of our students. It's a real one-on-one thing, even with our staff, so every kid has an adult that's running with them. And the way that we've seen this grow and evolve after going on two years now, is last year, our fifth graders that went on to read, we had two of them come back and, and run with our kids this fall. So, they're still interested in running, they, they, and that's really fun to see, is that that's, that interest is continuing. Another thing that I have seen unfold over the last couple of years is what I call a pie, an acronym of pie. And at first, when we're offering these opportunities, and let me back up just a second here, the opportunities, ideas that we come up with these things, are either the resources that are available to us. It's student input, it's faculty input, and it's parent input. And so, we take all those things into consideration, and that's how we're able to offer these things. So, what I've seen with our students first, is when they start participating, they're having a good time, they're engaged, but they're engaged at just a participation level only. As time went by, I saw input. Ms. Schultes, can we, can we have this one? Ms. Schultes, why can't we offer this one? When are we going to have it again? Well, this time around, I'm seeing even another layer, which is even more exciting, where these kids are coming to me, and they are fully engaged, not only in participating and input, but now they want to put the clubs together themselves. So, now I've seen outlines, kids will come to me with a notebook paper, and they'll say, this is when we want to have it, this is the club we want to have, and either are the students we'd like to ask? And so, the first time, or the first time or two that that happened, I thought, you know, that's, it's interesting, I observed it, it's kind of, I don't want to say huge as a, you know, not. It didn't occur to me like, let's just dive in and do it. I knew there was a time and a place for it, and I wanted to make it happen, but the third time a kid came to me, the third time a kid came to me, I said, we got to do it. And luckily, it was something that was very doable, it was book club, and right at my alley, since I'm also the librarian there. And it is totally student-led, it's on Wednesday afternoon, it's before school is out. And it's, these kids come in, they have a plan, they've chosen a book, I've gotten a book for them. And they read it in school, and they have their assignments that they do at home. And it was quite cute, because they wanted to have their, these detailed assignments. And so, then I got to step in and have to help them with book discussions and questions and that sort of thing. And next year, we are going to unravel more of the parent engagement in the evening times, when the parents are more available. And we're going to try a six-week, six weeks of sessions, each week will be something different. So, one week might be yoga, and the kids and parents will get to experience that. The next week might be something else like tennis. But, that's where we are with, with school clubs, so I think that's why I.
I don't know. I have to ask, the blues in school, is this like Muddy Waters and Blind Lemon?
No, that just came to my attention recently, I know it's been at another school, I think it was at Disney. And so, I'm just in the exploratory phases of that right now. But, one of the people I work with closely at Barnes and Noble, her husband's involved, so.
It's Harman, kids will want to have like Harman.
Harman, yeah.
Yeah, there you go. That's pretty good, yeah.
So, they, so just to clarify, these are extracurricular clubs?
Yes, these are after school, after school time.
Okay.
Right between, we have super snacks, and they're typically from three or four, one day a week. Sometimes they are two days a week, running club, of course, these are two days a week, so they can prepare for that 5K. And three times a year or so, we offer one at the beginning of the school year up until Thanksgiving break, that's our fall. Our winter one starts after Christmas and runs up until spring break. And then our spring session will start after spring break and run through the first week of May.
Thank you.
Alright, Dr. Anderson told me I had two minutes, and he kept saying that over and over, because he and I have worked together a long time. I have been in Springfield and tried to fly into the radar for 22 years and not get called before the school board, and 22 years later, here I am saying. At Robertson, we've got so many cool things going on that I could talk all day. So, what I'm going to do is just throw you guys all the information, come over and see us, and just experience what happens at Robertson, because we have so much fun over there, and our kids are fantastic, and our teachers are fantastic. So, we just invite you to come over, and then we can like, really talk. But, the quick highlights, we have two programs going on, which Dr. Anderson outlined. We have the community school, and then we have the balanced calendar, which some people call year-round school. And we don't call it year-round school, because that makes kids think they're going to school year-round, and a balanced calendar sounds a lot more appealing. But, our kids go the same number of days as everyone else, we just spread them out differently, you know this, because you operate the calendar every year, thank you. But, Dr. Anderson said, you know, what is different between Robertson now and Robertson, you know, when you guys started this? And I will just say, you know, typically, when we first started, we start school at 7:30 in the morning, and at 2:45, the kids packed up and went home, and that was about it. Now, we start, our typical day for 70 percent of our kids will start at 7:30, and will end more like four or five, because depending on if they're in one or two after-school clubs. There are some days when we start school at seven with some clubs, and there's one night a week that we have a community program involved in our school, and so, we're there until 7:30 or eight every night, and we feed them dinner. And everyone in the community gets to come in and have dinner. So, some days where they're 12, 13 hours, and some days are, you know, just, just a little longer than the regular school day. Laura talked a lot about our after-school clubs, what you see out there. And I've always been a proponent of after-school clubs, so even before we were a community school, I was trying to do this kind of stuff, and I would like gather, you know, I'd grab this friend here to do this or that friend. And so, everything was sporadic, and it was just like, how could we, how could we get it in, you know? And so, and, you know, participation was okay, but it wasn't great. Now, we are much more strategic, and we have a lot of, we obviously have a lot of clubs with a lot of different interest levels. But, more than that, what we're trying to do is develop some skill-based clubs. And an example of that is like Dance Chance that we have going on right now, and had it going on earlier too. The kids can start that at a young level, and then the next year, they can move up to a more intermediate level, so that the skills build on each other, so that we're providing some of our students with opportunities to learn that they might not have otherwise, and some avenues that they might not have. What I'm super excited about is if you look on the projected for next hall, we have a Let's Dance Club, and we're going to participate in the Thriller Dance Town on C Street. And so, I mean, and that's just part of this step process that it's taken to get there. We started with the Dance Chance, we teach them some basic things, and eventually, then they're able to do something more, a little more advanced. The new buzzword in education now is OST, that's out-of-school time, so there's a new acronym to add to the SBS barrage of acronyms. So, out-of-school time is, again, available. Before, just what we do, when we can do it out, all strategic and very student-based and community-based. Community connection before 10 years ago was weak. You know, we, we had a few partners, and we, you know, we tried a few things. But, I think our focus now with our community, we have a much stronger connection, and we're really teaching our kids and training our staff to look at reciprocity. Not just sit back and, hey, what can our partner do for us, what can they do for our kids, which we need, but what can we then turn around and do for our partners? And we've had some opportunities like that, where our, our kids did some bell ringing around Christmas time, and then we've had some times where our staff. Hi, guys. Where our staff volunteered at Habitat for Humanity, and some different things like that. And Salvation Army, where we were ringing bells too, and so, anyway, we're trying to give back. The biggest, biggest, biggest change between 10 years ago and now is our calendar. And I'm just going to throw this out, when we, I've been a proponent of year-round school for the whole time I've been at Robertson, and it just didn't work out, the timing wasn't right earlier. And I'm, I'm going to tell you, when, when I first talked about out-of-school time, or I'm sorry, about the year-round calendar, the balanced calendar, it was purely for academic reasons. You know, my kids were scored here, when they left me in May, and then they'd be scoring down here when they came back to me in August. And it would take almost a full quarter to get them back up to here before we could just move on. And we were losing ground. And what we have seen, and some of the data that you guys were shown plays that out, but what we have seen is that those, that my kids, not only are they academically stronger, but I get to feed them hot meals on a more consistent basis. They have P E on a more consistent basis, they have recess, they have access to my school nurse, they have access to my school counselor. They've got those relationships and those programs on a more consistent basis now, so that we can really impact them, not just academically, but emotionally and physically and all as well. And then, the cool outspend of that was what we used to call intercessions, and now we call them I-experience, just because we needed a new name, another new acronym in SBS. But our I-experience.
We definitely need more of those.
And they are just so much fun. We have a two-week intercession in October, and traditionally, we've had a two-week intercession in March, but we decided that didn't work so well, so we moved that back to our intercession experience this time, it's going to be in May. But those kids, they come, and they have a great time, and we really twist the curriculum around, so it's very engaging and very hands-on. And so, those intercessions or I-experience are fantastic. And I'm going to tell you, I'm going to thank you for letting us do that. Any school that I've checked out, and mostly they're in Oklahoma, that have something similar going on, always charge the kids and the parents for these intercessions or these I-experiences, and we do it for free. And our kids are there, and they're engaged, and they're having a great time, and so, just want to throw that out. We do have, I kind of feel like I'm in a corporate way, I approach the bench. We'll pass these around, there's paper clipped in there, is an article, you can read that at your leisure, whenever you guys have time. In the community newspaper, they did an article about Robertson and our last intercession, which was on Route 66 thing, so that was super fun. And that's all I have, Dr. Anderson, how they.
Fantastic, it took less than two minutes, and that was.
What part are you on?
So, my appreciation for these two for sharing just a quick picture, and I would, I would invite you to follow up on that invitation to go out. And so, Dr. Huffman talked about the impact, and I'm going to get on that, I'm going to leave that with you here. So, and compare some of the attendance rates, comparables. So, we talked about that at the beginning, I shared some comparable schools. And I think this is extremely important to highlight what Dr. Huffman was attending. So, I'll train your eye a little bit, so Robertson is at the bottom. And this was their first year, at that time, their enrollment was 339, they had 301K. They had 301 kids come for summer school. Skip over to the next one and go to the backside, in the orange there. Percent of regular enrollment attended summer school, so 301 of the 339 is nearly 90% of their students enrolled for their intercession. That's, and out of that 89%, 97% of the percent went regularly. They went to it. They didn't also, they didn't just enroll, they went to it, okay? That's pretty amazing. That's a very high number. And we track theirs, we have to track theirs a little differently than our explore session. So the rest of those schools, they do a first explore session and then a second explore session. A session in June and a session in July. How Robertson's is spread up, they have two weeks in the fall, two weeks in the spring, and two weeks in the summer. So they have six weeks of intercessions. All of it is optional. But look at how many students actually participate, sign up and then participate. So that's the comparable in 2015. In 2016, you'll see very similar numbers. And then through last summer as well, you'll see very high numbers compared to most students when we have regular explore options.
Just to make sure I understand what you're saying. You're comparing Robertson intercessions, not their reg, not Robertson balanced calendar semesters. You're comparing Robertson intercessions to traditional elementary summer school attendance.
That is correct, yeah, that is exactly what this is demonstrating. So if you go during the, if you look at their attendance during the regular year, Robertson is at or just under what the elementary average would be as far as regular attendance during the regular school day of a regular school year.
Okay, say that one more time. Because I don't think we have a slide on regular attendance compared.
No, we do not.
Okay.
So during the regular school year, Robertson students are at or just under what attendance would be for the elementary average of a regular school day during the regular school year. 172 days that everybody's required to attend. When you get to the extra, the optional, the explore, the, and we're calling them Robert intercessions, then you see dramatic how many students participate and attend. Because, probably because of how it's set up, that's just an interesting point. A two week intercession is pretty powerful than a June or July.
Steve, can you flip back one or two slides so we can get the timeframe here? 15, okay. Can they come forward?
Yeah, change the page.
Was that three years there?
That's three years, yes.
And in this year, in those, 2017, it's still a significantly positive number. But it's 69, it has come down slightly. Is that just sort of an art, I mean, that's a data point, it's not necessarily a trend.
That's probably what I said, that this is gonna be a round tree instead of Robertson. Well, that's just Dr. Huffman.
Okay, if you're looking for statistics, you're coming to the wrong guy. But my guess is this, is this based on last, last school year or past time? Or my October intercession?
This is based on your last.
Last four years. Okay. No, I don't know why it's dipped so much except, you know, my attendance at that same time, or my enrollment, I'm sorry, took a big dip.
Yeah.
So, but that shouldn't have messed with the percentage, I see what you're saying.
It's because, it's because explore and enrollment increases.
I mean, it may just be data. I mean, there's a lot up here to make a trend.
They could have chosen to go to explore class.
But that was with the redraw of the boundary, that's why.
Here's my question.
Enrollment went to 221.
Yeah, this was the year it went from 318, 3 enrollment to 221.
Comment question, comment question. So I don't work in AAA department. But I mean, one could theorize that our explore numbers continue to increase in general. So your proportions are gonna change, generally speaking. And also Robertson school kids could attend an explore program.
They could only go in July, is that right? They couldn't go in June, is that right?
They could go in March, right? They could go in July. The second explore, and I have a few that do that.
Okay, so there may be a few that go to explore.
And I think it's too early to tell at this trend point. This is kind of a starting trend, especially how early we are still in infancy of explore compared to this. But it's something we're gonna watch.
So my, like fundamental question here, and it's like so green and real that I, I'm not asking this to be offensive. But what is significant about this? Like, why are we comparing a two week intercession at Robertson to an explore at one of these elementaries? Like, please tell me, why is that important for me to grasp?
I think it's important because of the number of days, the number of, when we are talking about experiences beyond the regular school setting that we are trying to provide, especially with what we're trying to do with explore going forward. We learned a great number of concepts and ideas from Robertson in this idea. Let's go beyond the regular morning day. What can we provide as learning experiences in these sessions? And all of a sudden, Robertson pops up, they have, they have six weeks worth of data, extra school days, great participation. Is there something we can learn and glean from that? What about the experiences can we take and adapt? Is it truly a calendar issue or is it something more? Is it something about the programming, something about the experiences? And that's why we're still such in that infancy, I'm not sure we can answer that. But I think that's the right question that we need to start from asking more of.
So with 70% of the kids, if they're attending the three intercessions plus your regular school year, school weeks, outside of Christmas vacation, and I guess there's some timing or somewhere that they're off. Are they in school the same amount as a kid in a regular school who goes to summer school, goes to explore?
Once or twice?
For both sessions?
No. The maximum amount of explore, of Robertson could go would be six weeks worth. The maximum amount an SBS student could go outside would be eight weeks. So it's a little different comparison.
So they're even up on everything with intercession, okay, so it's two weeks less, okay.
Yes.
Gotcha. Any other questions?
No. When this, when this was proposed, I felt like the balanced calendar was probably the biggest thing that would make a difference with kids with those demographics. I just felt like, and then the fact that we started adding services at the school was a bonus to me. But simply because the balanced calendar provided the same teachers with the students who didn't have the, their time away from that teacher was minimal. And if they accessed the other two week period of time, it was really the teacher and the student being able to stay on that path hopefully going up. And I still think that's the beauty of this. I think it's the power there. So I think we just, still think we need to look at that because my, and I've been on the board a long time.
Really?
So the same things have happened. And the same things I don't like still continue to happen is that we try these programs and we say we're gonna look at them and we're gonna look at the things that are good and we're going to spread them out. Now, we started doing a few things lately to make that happen. But it's taken us a long time. So to me, we still need to look at, Robertson's unique in our community. It's unique, there's no other school like that. So if you're correct in being able to look at some of those demographics during that time and say, do we have to replicate a community school every place? No, I don't think we have to do exactly the same thing because each school, community seems to have their idiosyncrasies and needs that they have. But there's, we just don't seem to move quick enough. We just, we do it and we leave it in isolation. And the good things that are happening only happen there for those kids. And I really didn't approve it for that. I mean, that was, my whole thing was, let's do it because this seems like a fantastic idea. And maybe it wouldn't have worked at all, I don't know. You know, maybe it wouldn't. But I really thought there's just some fantastic things that we had never done in Springfield before. And I still think that's what, where we're weak. Where we, we don't take the things that are really good and say, this needs to be spread out along the Carney and Brent Court. You know, because those are similar school. And if those good things are happening, they need to be shared and then uniquely done in those communities based on what those communities will accept. I like the idea that the, in the beginning, Robertson was picked by all staff and community said, we really want that. We didn't have to convince a whole lot of, you know, you need to do this. They said we wanted it. So I think we're at a point to say, this has been, how many years have we done this? Seven, seven, this year, seven. We need to look at that. We need to start replicating those things that are good in other buildings. And if there are things you still have a question about that aren't so great changing, you know?
Bruce, one of the ideas to really drive at that, that you're gonna hear more about. You've heard our choice transfer study, the group that's been working that, one of the, that came. One of the things that's spinning off of that group is putting a process for local schools and their communities that want to do something like that. Instead of us having to go out and say, I identify you, go do this, right? So that we have the local ownership. And if, right, it doesn't work very well that way. It worked best at Robertson because there was local ownership. So putting a process together for those schools and those communities to kind of apply that process. And say, we want to try the balanced calendar. We want to try, whether that be an expansion of other programs, a STEM school or a, something, taking our other programs that have been, you know, environmental science school, right? So putting a process where that school, community could apply. We're not ready to roll that out yet, but we, we believe that replicating is good. But we want that local ownership in that replication process and kind of instead of a district force. So it's one of the things we're gonna be bringing for update soon.
To your point with the calendar, the added time with the teachers and the students, it goes from 172 days to over 200 days. And you know, Dr. Huffman, teaching is all about, teaching is all about relationships. And that's what this option has provided is greater and deeper relationships. And that's why I think it's working.
I think the very specific point, I appreciate hearing that. I think the key principle here is that we have to be clear eyed and we have to be courageous enough to look at the data and see what's working. Give it appropriate amounts of time to see what's working. Those things that are, and we can understand why, and if they're scalable, we scale those. And those things that aren't, where we don't have evidence that they are, right? And those two are not necessarily the same thing. Then we need to think critically and adjust and pivot, as it were. Pivot into, you know, toward those things that we have demonstrable evidence are actually doing the things we want to do with four and two kids. So the AAA office will be absolutely crucial.
I heard Bruce saying a couple of things. One, and I'm asking you if I'm hearing you correctly, but one was kind of begging the question of, we started this Robertson school model with an expectation and did we meet that? And then the other thing I'm hearing from you is, are we internally sharing best practices among schools once we figure something out at one school that may work over here? So if I were summarizing, is that an accurate reflection? So I wasn't here when this was approved, and so I'm throwing this out here. You know, so I don't know, what was the expectation, what was the metric? Has it been reached? Have we exceeded our expectation? Have we, you know, landed in the middle? Do we need to pivot? I, I don't know what contextually was set.
And there were a few goals and expectations and we can actually go back and bring that to you at a later point. It's not here, but we can say, here's what our goals and outcomes were desirable. And when Christine and I and Dr. Huffman were reviewing those the other day, many of those were met. Or were well, if that wasn't the specific goal that we met, we're certainly very close to it. So we can bring that back to you. But I think the biggest thing, takeaway was try something different. And this was at a stage when we were very doing things the same.
Yes.
And I think from that aspect, this turned out to be very promising.
So just kind of thinking about equity and access. This balanced calendar creates more access to learning, sustainable, and you see with that balanced calendar, kids are coming. So I think that's kind of ties it back to the theme for equity and access. As much as it's about the program, that balanced calendar does indicate that kids are coming during those intercessions at a higher rate than if they were coming to just a regular school.
I would like to thank you both for coming and sharing tonight. And I love Kevin, I wrote it down, that I loved the whole time you were talking about my kids. And so just thank you for sharing the love for your kids. And I know that's, you know, felt across the district, but tonight I felt that from you. And thank you for sharing your passions and being excited about book clubs and all the clubs that are going on to help support our students. So thank you both.
We're proud to be able to come. Like I said, just come over and see us, we're right on Carney and that.
The Carney Court door.
Right next to Warren. Okay, thanks, Kevin.
Me and me and Bruce.
Okay. Moving on, is somebody okay? Is there any break or anything?
I'm good, I'm good.
Board policy action, 8.01. At first read, any comments or thing, changes?
Input to it before?
Yep. Okay. I would entertain a motion to adopt the policies presented. Am I gonna go through all of those?
Sure.
Hopefully you've read them. Most by Charles, or your second?
Second.
Second by Tim.
I don't wanna know. We've just got like five today.
Did I vote? Did it come up already?
First, Bruce?
Did you vote? Did it come up?
There it is.
Next item, new business items? There are no new business items. That's good. Moving on, unfinished business, curriculum adoption. Speak on that one. Questions? The board? Sound good?
This was what was presented at the last meeting.
I would entertain a motion to, if I can get there.
I'll make that motion.
Recommended instructional resource material, okay. Motion by Denise?
Second.
Your second, by Alina. Okay, thank you. Moving on, item 10.102, Facility Master Plan Project Study List. I know you all had a great discussion the last time, at the last meeting. Questions or comments before we send that off for the architectural studies?
And what you're approving tonight is just for us to go get a fee estimate of that project list?
Getting more information.
We'll be giving that list to the architects, asking them to come back with a bid of fees to do the study of renovation versus new construction. So then that bid would come back to you, probably 30 days out. And then we would, we wouldn't get the information back from the architects till late summer likely. So this is just to proceed with getting the fee estimate from them.
I've got about a minute and a half. I need to read something here because it... I need to read something here because it, I've been, and I know all of you have too, been listening to the student voices recently from Florida. And the student voices that many of these students expressed outrage at the failure of adults to not change what happened. And I maybe took that, I took that personally because I thought as an adult on a school board, there are certain things we can't do that Congress and the president and state legislators and governors have to do. And sadly, I don't have much hope that much change will take place with them. I just don't have much hope there. So my thing was, what can I as an adult on a school board do? Because to me, one thing is just stay silent and wait it out. And like, it seems like a lot of legislators, congressional people do, just wait till it dries down and we'll keep moving on. And I'm not ready, I just can't do that. I can't, I can't do that waiting and remain silent. And it just occurred to me as they were doing that, that we're involved right now in this process. And it's a good process. I've got no problem with the process to evaluate both new buildings, eventually, new buildings or renovation of buildings. And we've, we've approved a number of academic initiatives in the past three years. And we have, sometimes they overlap and we're not sure exactly what's made a difference and what hadn't made a difference. But to me, we could, as a school board, what could I do? What could a school board do as adults for children in this community? And I think what we can do is say, our priority is for the safest schools possible in Springfield, Missouri. And I think as a school board, we can do that. Now, we're going, the process is moving ahead and we're going to let people look at our buildings. And we had a little discussion, I remember Denise asked some questions of Tim and we, you know, but we, I don't think we ever moved past that to say, and I'm sorry a tragedy had to happen, but whatever it is, to make us say, that simply isn't going to, based on what we can do, we're going to do everything in our power to prevent that. And we, I think we've done a fabulous job in providing nutrition for our students. I don't think there's anybody doing that better than we're doing. And we're saying that's important to learning. And I think safety is right up there with that. And based on, all the way back when I went to school on the hierarchy of needs, both of those are below learning and have to be there. So I'm not sure when it's, maybe we don't, because I've been reading a lot since then about that. And sometimes I, I read things and I'm thinking, somebody's trying to sell this to schools based on fear. So we've got to sort that out. But what we have is, I think, a real good process in place. But we also have to decide as a board, if we say as a board, when this process is finished and when we have the final product that we're going to present to the community, the safety of our students is first on that list. That we're going to have to decide that because either it's going to be or it's not going to be. And those, there isn't going to be an unlimited amount of funds. And so if you make that first, something's got to be second and third and probably not done. So somewhere along the line. But the really, as an adult, for children and our staff, just as, and just as important that they're going to those buildings, to me, then we can, we can say that to the people who are designing and changing the buildings, that's our, that's first. We can say that. We don't need to say it today because the process hasn't, it's just starting. Again, not questioning our process because I like our process. I like what we're doing. But I think in the end, it'll be up to us. It will be up to seven board members to say, I want that and we're going to, we're going to do that. And to present, and the community will have the final say.
Yes.
But if we don't put it there, then they don't, they can't put it there.
Bruce, I would just respectfully disagree with only one little bit. And I know this kind of takes us a little bit off. And then I think if we don't say it, I think today is the day we have to say it. And we have to say it every day going forward because in a way it gets sort of Jerry opened the meeting with, you know, reflecting on what's happened in the last week. By all means, prayers and thoughts, by all means. But that's not enough. It simply is not enough. Because I'm both inspired by the kids in Florida who are survivors. And I'm ashamed of us as adults that we let it get to this point. And I absolutely think we have to say it today as part of the facilities plan. I think we have to say it as educators. And frankly, we've got to say it as human beings, that this madness simply has to stop. I'm not, I'm not an advocate of simplistic solutions or even simple. It's really complicated, but it absolutely has to stop. And if one, one process, one part of that process is building or helping pay the bucks to design and for us to build safer buildings, more power to us. That's not all. But I do believe we have to say it today and we've got to keep saying it because this is just, it's not, this is not acceptable.
No, it's not.
I, I thank you for bringing this up, Bruce, and bringing it to, to the board table as a conversation, both publicly, and we haven't had a chance to even be together since the last incident in our, in our world and that type of thing. But I just want you to know that, you know, I agree 100% with what you're saying. And thank you for bringing this to the board table.
I, I, you know, I'm not going to go off this because I'd be here for 30 minutes. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to get on my soapbox. But it's very, it's exactly where Bruce is and, and I would encourage you to read, I'm just going to say it, read a book called Uneasy Peace. And it details and outlines part of it, the fact that kids who don't feel safe at home, school, transportation, can't learn at school. And the data supports it. The research supported it. We all knew that. We know kids don't feel safe. They're not learning. And this just supported it. And it's just, you know, you said Maslow's hierarchy, that's exactly right. And so that starts with us. That's, I said, I wouldn't get on my soapbox, I lied, I guess. But somewhere we got to, that's got to be a strategic issue of this board, the safety of our kids. In our minds it is, but is it actually as we're doing stuff?
We need to be explicit.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. About that, Rabbit?
We need a, we need a.
And that's a, I need a motion to approve the. We'll save it for Board of Directors.
Um, yeah, 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 yeah. This is, in effect, we're simply asking for our, our motion today is to see more information.
That's correct.
Correct.
Kit fees regarding the study. There you go. And that's a second, second here.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the project list for the architectural study.
So move.
Motion by Tim?
Second.
Second by Bruce.
Okay. Motion carried.
Moving on to item 10.03, the master plan consolidation public hearing is part of our policy to hold a public hearing. And the proposal here in front of you is to hold that public hearing on March 8, at 6 o'clock here in the Craft Center, to consider a proposal for repurposing Campbell Elementary to an early childhood center. So I, looking for approval to establish the public hearing. That's all this does, is establish the date and time for a public hearing. Motion by Alina?
Second.
Second by Denise. All those in favor? Okay. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on to public comments for non-agenda items. Certainly the board of education allows comments on topics not related to the agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes for each speaker and will be timed. It's inappropriate to address the board about individual students and/or individual staff members by name in open meeting. If you have any concerns about individuals, these concerns should be addressed to the appropriate administrative supervisors, either in the school or in the district office. Certainly, we use this time to listen to our comment, listen to the comments and concerns of the public, but we will not entertain or engage in a dialogue during the meeting. We have two speakers tonight. First one, Alan Kipper.
I'm a member of the, I'm a member of the Springfield School Board. I went through the whole Springfield school system to say that. And I cannot do any better than to bring back to our embrace, if we're looking for solutions, and I do appreciate all your comments, I'm Taylor, because it is on our minds and our hearts very much how to keep our schools safe. Let's see what the prophet will say is said. Hear the word of the Lord, the children of Israel. For the Lord has a controversy with the inhabitants of the land because there is no truth, nor mercy, nor knowledge of God in the land. May I remind you, we are a republic, a democratic republic that was founded on this Bible in believing in a future state of either rewards or punishments for every person. As I've stood here time and time again, I have held up our founding fathers, what their hearts were, that we would educate our young people. But before I go into quoting Noah Webster, let me tell you what he says here. Because this is what's happened. He said, my people are destroyed for lack of knowledge. Because you have rejected knowledge, I will also reject you if you shall be no priest to me. My friends, the only way we can have our schools safe is remember that as we do not offend the great God of the universe, God of Abraham, Isaac and Jacob, God and Father of our Lord Jesus Christ, he will shower down blessings. The apostle Paul said, for the weapons of warfare are not carnal, they're not fleshly, they are not physical, but they are mighty through God to the pulling down of strongholds, casting down imaginations, and every high thing that exalts itself against the knowledge of God and bringing into captivity every thought to the obedience of Christ. John Winthrop, who was the president of Princeton, said, cursed be all that learning that is contrary to the cross of Christ. Because we rejected truth, Jesus said, on the way, the truth and the light, we've opened the door wide. And what can we do? It is time for us to repair. It's time for us to turn back and say, oh, God of our fathers of America, please forgive us. Let's get prayer back in our schools. Let's get Bible reading back in our schools. And you can do it because this is an autonomous school district. You have the power to say yes or no. If you really want to see students coming into peace and learning and being safe to learn, we will exalt the great God who said, I will protect you, I will hide you under my wings. We don't have to worry if we will just simply turn back to him. I wish I had a lot more time, but you didn't give me about three minutes. Continue next time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second speaker, Robert Mundy.
Folks, you know you're getting old when the grandchildren go from pawpaw mom to grandpa mom. It happens very rapidly. Sir, I want to thank you so much for what you brought forward. Our Ten Commandments, if you want to see a change, put them back on the walls of these schools. You are an autonomous organization. And I challenge you based upon the Ten Commandments of Almighty God to stand up and speak up and put those Ten Commandments up. William Federer's book, America's God and Country, I challenge every one of you to get a copy of that. Some 5,000 quotations about our founding fathers and their faith in this risen Christ. You haven't been fair with our children in the fact that the Supreme Court building in, in Washington DC has the Ten Commandments on it, six different places. That is in fact, sirs and ladies and folks, that is a fact. That is our American history, our heritage and our legacy. Arkansas has decided to put in God we trust. Thank God for D. Wong, he got that on the back of the sheriff's apartments and on their cars. Situational ethics, secular humanism is a work of the Satan. And we wrestle not against flesh and blood, but powers and principles. You put those Ten Commandments back on the walls and they'll know what ethics, ethics and morals are about. Don't have much time. Thou shall have no other God for me. Thou shall not make any grave an image. Thou shall not take the name of the Lord thy God in vain. Get these school books out that are promoting death, God's name in vain, and homosexual out. Get them out of the schools. Fire those teachers that bring them in. I challenge you to stand up. This has been known as the buckle on the Bible belt. That is why our kids that are made in the image of God, they now feel like they're beasts to the beach, heroin addicts, methamphetamines. I volunteer down the street here at the Veterans Coming Home Center and I see many, many teenagers coming in there crying out because they don't have any hope. If I have personally offended you, I am sorry. But you have an opportunity to change the heartbeat of this nation. I challenge you based upon this word, the founders of this nation, history, the heritage and the legacy that these men stood upon. Fifty-two of them are definitely Christians. The other four are quoting a lot of Christian things. That is our history. Shame on me for not doing better for my grandkids. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris Mundy. Okay. Moving on to cabinet reports. Dr. Judd?
Yep. I'll turn to the cabinet team and start with Ms. Embry. Do you have anything?
I would like to provide you an update regarding the budget development process. We will begin our presentations on the budget, starting in the next four weeks, on March 6. We'll start with that overview about the process and introduction. Then we'll move through each of the funds and wrap up June 5 with the final budget presentation recommendation, seeking approval at the June 26 meeting. So more to come.
Thank you. Dr. Dawson?
Just to go over what we're trying to do, I just want to give a shout out to Mr. Jeremy Gorlin. He was to coordinate our ELL director, English Language Learners. And he was instrumental in coordinating the reception of 45 students from Saudi Arabia. So we were able to kind of bring health services together, transportation together, counseling services together, all kinds of nutrition services, all kinds of folks to do one-stop shopping for them at Bentley Center. So they all got registered in the same day. So big kudos to him. We also took a day then to buffer. We brought all the teacher, all the, all the principals that will be affected, these students. We brought to some cultural awareness and some training for those principals. And then they start at school on February 14th. Happy Valentine's Day. And so we brought that, 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 and it's been a seamless transition because it was intentional for those teachers. So I want to thank them very much. Also, I just saw this through, and it was really from Ann White. She's our coordinator volunteer. Also, I saw this through, it was really from Ann White, she's our coordinator of volunteerism. And she sends out a newsletter all the time, but this one was, caught my eye. And it said, "This time, last year, we had about 70, 7,800 hours of volunteers that are recorded in our system." And now, compared to this year, we have 9,400 hours of service already recorded. So, I wanna thank Ann, but I also just wanna thank our community for stepping up and coming in and wrapping around our kids to support them in their reading or teaching or mentoring. So, I feel very special.
Thank you. Ms. Penny?
Early notice incentive, we wanna give you a real quick update on that. Last month, we had 72 teachers and four administrators who provided us with that early notice for the $1,000 incentive. Nine took advantage of that in this past month for the $750 incentive. And thus far for March, which our deadline, I believe, is March 19th, we received five notices. And as part of that, we've worked with the elementary secondary team to identify those positions that we can go ahead, we can go ahead and post. And so, we are now in the internal, internal transfer window where that posting came down. Interviews have been ongoing. In the next several days, we'll begin to have those placements made or those transfers accomplished and we'll have some openings in some other buildings. They'll be shifting and that's largely in the direction of Dr. Anderson and Dr. Dublin. So, we'll work through that and then we will begin posting externally and move forward.
Thank you. Steven?
I just wanna celebrate a sampling of the great stories that are coming out of the district. We started in the news leader. We recently saw a profile of Jaden Cinder, a student from Hillcrest, who won the Boyzone World's Love Youth of Springfield, recognition, very well deserved, and the scholarship that comes with that. Anton Brookshire, Kickaboo, the basketball star, and great story about him and his work to achieve great things. Most recently, Amy Moran, the counselor at Kickaboo High School, was a hard-to-seek survivor. She shared her feature as part of the district's efforts to place AEDs in each and every facility, which I think is a fantastic story and it really showed the importance of her and Amy's vision. AEDs were also covered by KY3 as well as Color 10. We also saw a great feature in the news leader about the expansion of early childhood education that the district has proposed and the impact that that will have on neighborhoods across our community. Dr. Powers was celebrated in a great feature, his work at Cherokee, and his role in his new awards as Missouri's Middle School Principal of the Year. And then finally, KY3 covered the bridge building contest of our students at the Academy of Exploration, which was really fun. It's a good video that came from that, as well as the window for our explore registration and how that has now opened up opportunities for students this summer. And then finally, two pieces on Color 10, one about Dr. Powers and then a live interview with Jeremy George, a teacher at Hillcrest, and the ways that he is engaging his students, most recently around the Super Bowl, Bradyland. You don't have to be a Patriots fan to be a part of Bradyland. So, it's a great feature on Color 10. And then finally, just a shout out to our district spokespeople. I know most recently, Rhonda Mannan has done a great job of just sharing the extraordinary work that's being done in our district around infant health and first aid training and just relationship building that's so key to keeping our, our school environment safe. And Rhonda has been a great ambassador of sharing that as well as some others in the district. So, just a quick summary there.
Thanks so much. Just a couple additional updates and number one, we have had a few snow days, if you haven't heard, ice days or like that.
Ice stays.
Not a lot of snow, more ice than anything, so.
We're hoping there's not another one.
We're hoping, exactly. So, hopefully it's still warm out there. We won't declare the last day of school. You get a lot of those questions, I know, for a little while because we're probably not through with this quite yet. Hopefully we are, but you never know. So, we'll try to announce that right around spring break. It's typically our goal because that's when hopefully the weather will leave us permanently. I'll move over to legislative environment. You've been, I'm sure, keeping tabs. Today was a busy day at the Capitol as senators and house members returned. Senate Bill 612, which is one that you've been well informed on and hopefully engaged on with local senators, was taken up. That's the ESA bill, or as we refer to it, it's purely a voucher bill. And it was debated on the floor for quite some time. I believe Jerry got an update that it has been laid over, which is good news. So, that means it can come back up, but the debate was long enough that they didn't feel like it was ready to go and people were still wanting to talk and Senate can continue to debate that until they're ready for a vote, basically. So, it's been laid over at this point. Doesn't mean it's done by any means, but it's done for today. So, keep your eyes on it this week and we'll, we'll keep you updated. 2247 on the House side continues to be the one to watch. We also have House Bill 2200, which is out there, which has gotten some attention also. So, keep an eye on those things and stay engaged. The session will begin to move quicker as we get past spring break. So, we'll, we'll keep you tuned.
Make it to spring break and then-
Yep, and then hang on.
Then hang on.
That's it for me.
Moving on, board comments. Any comments from the board? Alina?
I have two. One, I'd like to give a shout out to Claudette and the news leader for, I mean, just over the last few months, there's been so many great stories about SPS students and Steven and his work and coming onto the cabinet. And I know you have been 100% influential in building, you know, relationships and feeding those good reports. But I just wanna tell Claudette, thank you for the reporting you're doing on our district and also from the legislative standpoint. And I just want you to know, I think it's been very fair and informative and just want you to know that I appreciate that. So, second thing is Dr. Dublin invited me, Dr. Dublin, Allison Pulley, who just left, and Dr. Dawson are all in the current Leadership Springfield class. There's two different classes and so we have two and one and, and Mike is, is in the other one. But Dr. Dublin invited me to moderate a SPS student panel this past week. So, we had four of our SPS high school students. And I just wanna give a shout out first, thank you for inviting me. But whoever helped pick the panel students was awesome. It was Nikki from, a graduate from our online program, who we've all cried and celebrated with her, and ranging from Alex, who's an OTC middle school, middle school, middle college student, to a Central IB student, to just a regular old Central student, you know? So, the, the adults in the Leadership Springfield program really had a lot of great takeaways. And their biggest takeaway, I think, was just hearing how we are individualizing supports to each students and providing a variety of programming to meet the needs of students. And the ongoing theme was about connecting career and college. The students were saying, you know, please connect career and college for what we're doing now, to show us how that's gonna impact our future and, and the trajectory. So, anyway, just want you to, let's, let you know that that happened and that our district provided great students for that panel and our community leaders are learning about the great things that are also going on and asking good questions.
On the flip side, really the awful stuff that's gone on in the last week or so, I was completely non-caffeinated today and didn't need to be because I hung out with third graders and Peter and the Wolf. At some point in the next 72 hours, I might actually get to sleep.
That'll wire you up right there.
And they, they love it.
They do. Thanks for hosting them over there.
Any other comments? Okay. Upcoming meetings? Nothing near terminal.
I have the study session and the hearing. So, let us know if you plan to be here for that night. And those are the two things that are on our radar.
I saw a MSBA regional meeting that's occurring in Springfield in March.
We have to save the date for, that came out, it's in Republic.
It's in Republic.
Spring meetings in April.
It's in April, it's a little further down the road.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think it's in April. It's a Republican.
Is the school board night, is uniform?
No. We gotta make-
I think it's moved. We know somebody though.
Too many there. Yeah. They got, got a guy.
We know somebody who knows.
Can't get anything done.
Yep, that's, Kathy, I'll put it on your calendars if she hasn't sent an invite out yet. So, we'll post it.
It's too early.
We'll push it out till, yeah, then the website, you can go.
What she means is we can't plan that far.
That's a long time.
We can't commit.
We're talking about that on, on March 12th, if any of you are interested. I know the school resource officers are involved. The Center for Education Safety is having, putting on a workshop here in Springfield for board members, anybody, on the topic of, let's see, I have the exact topic, when educators become sexual predators. And it's dealing with the whole issue of, that sexual predator issue. It's incredible program that this will be the, we're just rolling it out just now. And so, it's a lot of research in it, a lot of stuff that's being done, talking to actual people that, that there. So, it's available to anybody who wants to go. It's all day, it's like nine to two, something like that. It's also spring break week, which I was concerned about, but I, everybody keeps telling me that that's probably not a bad thing because there's no kids here. So, SROs will be more available to go to stuff. So, that's just, that's, that's, that's coming up. That's one of the things coming up that we got. But other than that, there's not many meetings that I know of. Okay. Moving on, plus deltas. If anybody's got any plus deltas, please put them up there. We do need to vote to go into executive session. So, I would entertain a motion, a motion that the board meet in executive session to discuss legal, real estate and personnel matters. That's provided in section 16021, section 1, 2, 3, and 13.
So moved.
Motion by Alina?
Second.
Second by Charles. Motion carried. We adjourn to go to executive session. Thanks so much.